We don't traditionally have sort of traditional opening statements, but along those lines, I thought maybe each of you could tell us what prompted you to run? What was sort of, if you had to tell voters what the number one issue that you hope to affect change on the Seminole County School Board, what would that be? And maybe for starters, we'll go in alphabetical order and start with Ms. Fernandez.
Hi, everyone. So I am recent, now I've recently moved to Florida. And the reason why I decided to run for school board is because of an experience that I had with my then 11-year-old son during the start of the pandemic where he was having a Zoom classroom with his teacher. And during this classroom, in a very multicultural classroom, she was talking about the protests that had been going on with Black Lives Matter and then proceeded to tell this very multicultural class that they are witnessing this through a lens of white privilege. So that was the first experience that I had with an agenda being pushed on our youngest and most vulnerable. And as an educator for 12 years, I saw some subtle instances of this while I worked in New York City. But moving to get away from that and other things, I have noticed that it's not much different here. And I am very scared for my children and for our children. And I have decided that one way to ensure that a lot of this is stopped is to run myself. So that is what I am doing.
Great, thank you. Ms. Garrick, why don't we go to you next? What's the main reason you are running? What change do you hope to affect?
Well, I have been committed to our schools for 21 years. I've worked professionally in 30 of our 37 elementary schools. And over the past couple of years, the noise that I've heard surrounding our schools does not reflect the schools that my children attended in SCPS, does not reflect the schools that I worked in, and does not reflect the experiences of the teachers that I know. So I taught both my children and the students that I mentored, if you believe in something or someone, you need to stand up and take action. I believe in public education. I specifically believe in Seminole County public education. We have been a premier school district for decades, we're the key economic driver to the region. The success of our schools has kept our property values high and our tax base strong. So I am here to promote and build on the excellence of our schools, to address our challenges, and we certainly have some, but build on our excellent reputation and move forward and get out an accurate message about what actually is taking place in our schools. So maintain and elevate.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Meminger.
Hello, hello, I'm Joshua Meminger. I guess I'll start with the first part of that question, which is what made me run? So my background is I'm a parent. I have three children currently in Seminole County Public Schools, meaning I definitely have skin in the game. My two little ones in particular are in elementary school, so I have quite a ways to go for me as a parent. And secondly, my actual profession is law enforcement. So being in law enforcement is kind of my first passion, but what I tell people is I developed a passion within a passion. So within that timeframe, I've spent a good amount of years, one as a school resource officer on all levels, so elementary, middle school, and high school, including Seminole High School, which is the largest high school in the county and probably one of the largest in the state, which is a unique experience in and of itself, honestly. And then I had the opportunity to, one, get promoted, and then actually take over our school resource unit, which is the largest municipal unit in the county. So my supervisory coverage was about 11 campuses and about 14 officers, give or take, on a day-to-day basis. So the vantage point of, one, having worked in the school every day, every single day, being assigned to different schools, and getting a chance to see kind of what happens behind the scenes, some of the things that needs to be addressed, because you hear these things first and foremost from the educators themselves, the instructional personnel and non-instructional personnel, and then getting a chance to promote up, and then seeing it from an administrative level, so going from a ground level to, say, let's say 10,000 feet, and now seeing kind of the big picture overall about day-to-day operations, things that we can change, things that we can improve on, especially from a school safety standpoint. My number one, one of my number one priorities is school safety. Wanting to make sure that, having come from the school safety division myself, that we, one, maintain what we already do, because we do an excellent job in terms of school safety. So let's not, I don't want that misconception out there. Seminole County Public Schools is probably one of the leading districts in this state when it comes to school safety. However, there are challenges and things that we do need to kind of address, and there are things that we can certainly do better and things we can add on to. And so without revealing operational security issues, and that would obviously make it more unsafe, there are definitely things I would love to help with and help address and make sure that we beat that drum, that there's a voice and an advocate for school safety, especially on our board.
Great, thank you so much. And Dr. Quinones.
Well, I'm running, as you may or may not know, I've been a teacher or in education for about 15-plus years. And so I do currently have two students in the Seminole County Public School system. I'm a proud resident of Seminole County and then even proud resident of Sanford, my, now my hometown city. So there's multiple reasons why I decided to run as an educator as well as a parent. You know, you kind of have a feel for an eye of what's happening within schools, not just surrounding school districts, but also our own. And so one of the goals for me personally is to see how can I help to create and build upon the foundation that Seminole County Public Schools has had for so long? And so one of my goals is to empower our parents. It's important that we regain that partnership. You know, in the Seminole County Public Schools policy, it discusses how we are partners. And I think some of that, there's been some mistrust, some distrust has been created. And I think that we do have a foundation that's fantastic, I think that we can improve on that. And so one goal was, okay, well, what can I do? I can either follow along, just say, okay, you know, things are good, but they could be better. And so as a parent and as a fellow educator, I think it's important that we realign, come together, and create that partnership once again. So, and that requires us to empower our parents. This is a partnership. And it requires us to engage the community, engage community leaders, as well as our students, because we want them to be able to graduate and have that success in the community, whatever, you know, area or avenue they decide to follow. And then lastly, our teachers, you know, the retention turnover of teachers has been at an all-time high, and that's been nationwide. And now we find ourselves here in Seminole County Public Schools dealing with that yet again. But it's even greater now with, you know, coming out of a pandemic. So it's very important to me that in order for us to have a successful and a strong foundation of educators and education system, we have to have someone in the classroom, quality educators. And in order to have a quality education system, we have to invest in our teachers. We have to make sure that those veteran teachers stay in the classroom. And so that's kind of in a nutshell, just some overarching areas that I would love to see when I'm on the school board.
And you know, I do want to ask one quick follow-up to you, Dr. Quinones. You mentioned empowering parents. Is there a specific example that you can think of where Seminole County has denied that empowerment in your mind to parents?
I wouldn't even call it denying. Yes, I have, I have personally spoken to parents who have felt, now this is again, whether they have the backing for this or not, but if it's their perception that there is mistrust, if it's their perception that there isn't a partnership, well, that's something that we need to look at. At the end of the day, all parents, you know, this partnership we talk about, school board talks about, that's one of our main roles. And so, you know, they say someone's perception is the reality, and whether or not we agree with it or not, you know, good is the enemy of great. And so I think, again, we need to go back to the foundation, the drawing board, the very basics, having those relationships, because relationships have been strained since COVID, you know, since we've all managed to be remote and no longer face-to-face. So I definitely think that there is area for opportunity.
All right, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the things that has dominated public education for the last two years has been COVID. And now we, we have data to show that some children did suffer educationally from being out of school. At the same time, you had a pandemic that was killing hundreds, sometimes thousands of Jordans. Where do you believe this, the school board, should it be faced with this decision in the future? Where do you believe they should draw the line? That, that is a, you know, how do you, how do you balance that as a school board member? And let's start with Mr. Meminger.
I would say that would need to be a joint stakeholder decision. So you want to look at, one, start pulling in all your community stakeholders, from law enforcement, public health, the Health Department being that sector, and kind of look at your numbers. So look at it on a statewide level, a regional level, how's that impact going to specifically affect Seminole County? Because you have to kind of make these decisions really, really, really specific to yourself and kind of figure out what is going to be the best way to move forward. I don't know if the school board should make that decision in a silo. So I always say, you know, bring in your partners, bring everyone in, and kind of see, all right, so what are we looking at? How is this really going to impact the community? Because obviously, when we remove children from the classroom and put them in the home, that impact is going to be widely felt by everyone, for parents, the staff members, just even resources as far as, you know, daycares, you know, a lot of parents can't afford that, or, you know, keeping them at home without supervision, because parents have to go to work. So you're eventually going to have some bleed over into other areas, and specifically for our at-risk youth, you will probably more likely than not see a spike in other issues because they're at home, alone, unattended, and will more likely than not go into the community. And it'll kind of have this kind of spreading effect. So for me personally, I would say it's kind of a look at the numbers kind of thing. You got to look at your numbers, you have to pull in your stakeholders, and you have to see if that's something that, because it's going to affect the entire community. So we want everyone's feedback, especially your parents, getting their information as well, and surveying how they're feeling about their children coming to school, and what are our mitigation efforts as a school board? So what can we do to help mitigate the impact on campuses? So it's a dense, dense question, but I think there's a couple avenues to address it from, and I would definitely say talking to your partners in the community and kind of building your plan from there is your best course of action.
Dr. Quinones, would you care to address that?
I don't want to piggyback, but I will piggyback on Josh. It is important to have stakeholders involved when you're making a decision based on something like COVID. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we didn't know what we were dealing with. You know, these pandemics, especially of this size, usually happen, they say, about every hundred years. And so this was one of those, you know, massively invasive pandemics that we dealt with, and we didn't know what to do. And at the beginning, the information that we got in was quite different than what the information we have now. And so I think, one, first and foremost, we do, it does have to be a collective decision. We do have to have those members involved in the community for the Department of Health. You know, CDC usually does assist with that particular, the guidance of what we should do next. It does involve, though, it should involve parents, it should involve law enforcement, because our students are not going to be in the classrooms. But I will say, though, that I think it boils down to a risk assessment, you know, assessing the risk, what we're dealing with. You know, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Now, that pandemic, of course, unfortunately, many lives were lost. But depending on what we're actually dealing with is going to kind of steer us in what the direction is we need to take. And so I don't believe in a one approach, you know, this is our blanket approach for everything we deal with. I think it depends on what the pandemic, what it is that we're talking about that's going to affect, impact our schools. Because when you look at risk assessment, which one is doing more harm to our children? You know, I will tell you, just personally speaking, my son was a kid who wore his mask religiously everywhere. And guess what? He still came down with COVID. He would wear it even outside when he was by himself. And he still got sick. And he got really sick, but he bounced back. And so, again, it's one of those things, like looking at, okay, what are we mandating as well? What are, what are we telling parents? What are we telling our teachers that they need to do in order to be a part of the education system? And so at the end of the day, to me, risk assessment is going to be one of the key factors in connection with speaking with those stakeholders, those who are in the community who know about viruses, who know about pandemics best.
Ms. Garrick?
All right, well, the other two candidates have given excellent information. As we all know, safety, as far as you're looking at the Maslow Hierarchy of Needs, safety is a paramount in what we need to address first. So I think it's imperative that we reach out to the safety professionals, which includes law enforcement, as was mentioned earlier, and our pediatricians, our, the CDC. We look to those professionals to guide us. As someone preparing for school board, my preparation has included going to the school board office and talking to their professionals, talking to the assistant superintendents in charge of curriculum, finding out exactly where we have challenges because of COVID. You probably have, have been following, but our recent school grades just came out. We are the only A district in all of central Florida, and our FSA grades are actually higher than pre-COVID. That being said, we still have students who are struggling to get to where they need to be. And so we really, moving forward, should we face any other kind of unforeseen disaster, we really need to look at those most vulnerable populations. They're often the populations that are socio-economically disadvantaged, that don't have the resources to succeed in a virtual learning environment. I will say that we, SCPS created some, some hotspots and partnerships with some area organizations. I think we continue to build on those partnerships. There was a really innovative idea, and I'm not sure exactly what country it is, but they took school buses and they made school buses hotspots, and they went to neighborhoods that did not have good Wi-Fi. So I think we need to look at lots of strategies to make sure our children are successful. We know that they are much more successful when they are face-to-face learning with an engaged teacher. Finally, I would like to say one, one mitigating strategy that I just learned about is, in the past, we have had two superintendents for the elementary schools, because we have 37 public elementary schools in Seminole County. This coming year, we are adding an intervention specialist to reach out to the most vulnerable schools where students are not at the, at the grade level that they need to be. So I'm proud to, proud to announce that Dr. Cummings will be filling that role in the upcoming school year, so that we can make sure that all of our students are on track, and particularly those students that fell behind during COVID.
All right, Ms. Fernandez?
Here's where I'm going to pull away a little bit from what everyone else has said. And I'm going to be very clear about this, because I have to take issue with that some of our students were affected by this pandemic. I will venture to say that all of our students, in one way or another, have been affected by this pandemic. For me, if I'm elected to the school board, I will never, never lock down the schools again. That is my guarantee. Unless the state and the governor have locked down everything, the schools will not be locked down. Because I will tell you this, during the height of what was going on, I personally was one of those teachers that said, I will go in there, I will go in and I will personally teach. sans mask, no mask, I've never worn a mask, that's just me personally. I refused to put a mask on my son, that was 11 at the time, so I pulled him out to homeschool. My youngest have never put a mask on. They will continue to go to school. That's me. That's where I'm coming from, this as one of those parents, as one of those moms. I will not do that to our children. I think children need to be in school. That said, there are plenty of parents who take a different approach, and that's fine, because that's what parents have to do for their children, what is best for their children. And if you don't want to send your child in because you are afraid, because you think something is a threat to them, that's a parent's personal choice. But in terms of the actual schools being locked down, as a board member, I will never vote for that. I will never, and just to add on that, I will never vote for a mandate, I will never vote again to mask our children. That is my guarantee to you.
Obviously, COVID turned school budgets on their, on its head immediately and for the last couple of years. As we move past that, though, sort of leaving COVID aside as you can, properly budgeting resources and getting enough resources to properly fund our schools and teach students is obviously an ongoing problem. It seems like it's been even more pronounced lately. Is there one area, maybe one or two areas briefly, where you feel like school resources have fallen short, that you think need more attention on an immediate level? And let's start with Ms. Garrick.
Thank you, I'm glad you asked me. I actually have been poring over the proposed budget for, that will be, that will be decided on this month. Our budget runs July to July. And I have to say, I am not a mathematician, so I would like, I haven't had an opportunity to meet yet with the CFO, but I would really like for our budget to be more transparent. I think if we had a pie chart that showed us exactly where the money was coming from at the state level, as well as the local level, and specifically which budgets we're allowed to take money from to meet other needs. For instance, with, with teacher salaries, we're, we, in Seminole County, moved up our starting teachers to that 47.5 level a year ahead of what was required, with the thought that we would have extra money in our budget then to raise the salaries of experienced teachers. Unfortunately, the state changed the way that we could appropriate money for that. And so if we raise the experienced teacher's salary, it means that we also have to raise the lower, the newer teacher's salaries. So the more experienced teachers really never get their due. So I would like to be able to have more control over our finances. I will say that we, I believe it was 64% of our money is spent directly on instruction, which is higher than Orange County, Volusia County, Lake County. The state average is 60%. So we are doing well, but it's, I will tell you, it's a little fuzzy to find out where we can, we can move things around. When I met with, when I met with an assistant superintendent, he said that we were, that the amount that we spend on administration is very light compared to some other districts. But again, it's really tough to see where we have flexibility. One area that has been a great need in Seminole County, and this is anecdotal from parents, is students with special needs. They have long been, the needs have not been met as fully as many parents would like. So that is one area that I think we need to figure out where we have some flexibility and make sure that every single one of our students is getting the support that he or she needs to be a productive citizen.
Thank you for that. Mr. Meminger, let's go with you next.
All righty. For me personally, just from kind of poring over the same budget, I have it pulled up on my laptop most times, that's, that's some dense reading, about 162 pages total. So that can be, that can be challenging. And likewise, I'm not exactly a mathematician or a budget analyst specialist, but however, I would definitely say ESC, exceptional student education, is one area in which we can absolutely fund better and kind of help get the resources, especially in the classrooms, specifically talking to teachers and talking to those who are in the ESC, about having more personnel on hand to help keep, one, the classroom safer, two, provide a better environment. I think that's such a crucial part for those students who are in that environment and need more. They need more resources, they need more help, they need, they need that hands-on kind of touch, exactly. Okay, we want to make sure we're helping these families as much as possible. And then outside of the home, so looking at trying to establish possibly even like private partnerships with us and other organizations to help extend the services into the home as well, especially, and if that's something that we can analyze budget-wise, and kind of cut from that percentage where we do overspend in some areas, and look at that. And then my other, my other pet project is always, always kind of just back to school safety, just working within school safety division, understanding what are some of the needs and requests specifically from our different departments and the sheriff's office about things that we can do to target hard. And so a lot of times that topic doesn't come up, but it's one of the most effective ways to immediately secure any facility. And so wanting to get funding towards that direction as well, in terms of where we can upgrade on campuses, physical security, and then our technological usage of certain things that we can actually start to use to help mitigate threats. And so those two areas in particular, I think, would be my big challenges. And then obviously, we would love, love, love to address compression for educators and non-instructional personnel as well. I want to make sure we always kind of include them in that conversation, instructional and non-instructional, that we address compression for our veterans and our system, because that is where the backbone of most organizations is going to be in the middle of the organization. So those incoming usually don't know what they don't know, and those on the way out are literally preparing to go out. So the middle is where you typically, you rely upon as an organization. So those are kind of my, my three areas.
Okay, thank you for that. Dr. Quinones, let's go with you next.
Awesome, thank you. All right, well, I will, I'll give you a couple of the areas that I see. Now, looking at the budget, especially the five-year proposed budget, you can see one of the, I guess, the areas where the schools are feeling it the most is when it comes to keeping those buildings running, keeping those schools, each campus running. So if you look at, let's say, one particular school, five years out, has a certain amount of money proposed in order to upkeep on the air conditioning, upkeep on the actual facilities that are currently in place. Well, with high inflation, with the budget, you know, costs of different items are no longer what they used to be. And so what then ends up happening is that particular project gets pushed back another year, and then another year. And so in order to educate our students, we have to have facilities, we have to have campuses that are open and running and ready for them to be able to, to be educated inside. If we don't have air conditioning units, I mean, this is Florida, right? And so just the simple upkeep of keeping schools up and running and functioning for our students, when you look at that five-year budget and you look at how much money is to be stretched, it's not a whole lot. And so first and foremost, facilities. Also, something near and dear to my heart, the second area would be our exceptional student education. And I know Autumn and Josh did touch on this. I've spoken to families, as well as teachers, and myself, I do have a child, the 504. And when you, when you meet with these teachers, when you meet with these parents, and they tell you how there are resources that are lacking in the classroom, that they are reaching out, but yet there's not enough to go around. And so how do we educate all of our students? You know, Seminole County Public Schools is about educating all students, and that includes our exceptional student education students, the 504s, our IEPs. How are we meeting them? How are we serving them best? In order to do that, we need to have resources. We need to have more teachers in classrooms, more classrooms for our ESC students, so that we do not have the mainstream students, who should not be mainstreamed, who need that one-on-one, who need that smaller student-to-teacher ratio. And currently, and I have seen evidence of this, well, we're not able to do that, and students are mainstreamed. And the only thing that happens then is then it creates another problem, because that student isn't getting their needs met. They're in a classroom with 15 other students. How could they get their needs met when they need to be in a classroom with, you know, a five-to-seven ratio? So that would be my second area. And then last would, would be safety and security. And I'll be real fast, it's important that we harden our schools as well as create perimeters around our schools, so that, you know, you look at other school districts, Hope County has a guardian program that's currently in place. Seminole County Public Schools is not one of those schools out of the 48 within the state of Florida. And so I think we do need to look at, okay, look at our budget, what can we move around? What are the areas that we're able to move around? Because currently, right now, it's hard when you look at the plan, when you look at the proposed budget, to see what is actually something that's hard and stone, that cannot be touched, versus something we can allot those resources elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez, I believe you're fourth here.
So our budget, obviously a huge priority. I couldn't agree with Ms. Quinones more, especially coming as this from, you know, I was a special education teacher. And so absolutely, I have seen, witnessed firsthand such a lack of resources for this particular population. And once again, not having the proper tools for the population in terms of keeping a 12:1 or a 6:1:1, whatever their needs are, throwing them into an inclusion, just to have them in a larger class setting, not helpful for anyone. So we really need to prioritize and find out where the waste and the inefficiencies are. And it is very difficult to do, because I have tried to look and find things, and it's hard. Um, and find out where the waste and the inefficiencies are. And it is very difficult to do because I have tried to look and find things and it it it's hard. I just would like to see something put out a little bit more user friendly and to be able to understand um precisely what is happening. So I would like the community more involved. I would like to hear input from a a a or. A group of people from each school, hearing what their needs are, what where um the parents have some input. And um because we need to absolutely make sure our priorities are met in terms of the functionality of the school. The safety of the school, even the school buses, they have to run and inflation is hitting them now with gas prices too. So we have to look at every single aspect and it is going to be challenging. But I think we need to um first and foremost, find the waste and where we can trim some before looking at some um adding money elsewhere. So.
I wanted to follow up with that really quickly.
Sure.
It's it's a topic that I think every time I bring this up in the school board interview, it makes people smile, which is something they really like to talk about. But it is also a challenge because it's expensive. Um, where do you see opportunities for Seminole County to improve its vocational, occupational? And more career oriented programming? Um, there are several really popular programs right now. So I'd like to like to know where everybody would like to see some expansion possibilities. And Ms. Fernandez, if we could start with you.
So um I I think overall, we have moved away from uh vocational training, which I think is a shame. And I see opportunities in it for our high school students to move to a a vocational uh program. That said, no matter what the program that um we decide to to put in place is. I think it is absolutely critical and essential that the students, as they are pursuing a career. Are also not being robbed of their civics education and uh history education. Because in order to be good, knowledgeable citizens in a productive society that understands our government. And how we operate, it is so important that we don't take that away from them. So yes, I do think there's opportunity to have a track for vocational assessment at the same time, not miss this part of their education. So that's where I stand on that.
Dr. Quinones, would you like to take this one?
Yes, I would love to. I am a huge supporter of vocational programs. Um, I mentioned recently in one of the forums, uh the excitement that I remember as a high school student walking by these vocational programs. And seeing the hands on learning that was taking place. You know, there's a a lot of um focus that's been put on learning that is not hands on, right? Sitting in front of a computer, um engaging in projects or activities where it's just a one individual kind of project. But when we are able to learn hands on and get that experience with partners in groups, uh there's something magical that takes place. And so vocational programs, uh electricians, plumbers, uh cosmetology programs, mechanics. I think we need to bring as much of that back as possible, as much that we have a demand for. But I do want to add something to that. I believe in Seminole County Public Schools, we need to add those voca- those foundational skills that are taught. Altering a checkbook, learning how to look for an ad when you need to rent an apartment, um creating a resume. Now, some of these we do have, but again, going back to the basics, these are skills that we need, whether it's a vocational program. Whether it's a student that's going to higher education when they get out of high school. It's important that they are able to be a successful and productive citizen in whichever avenue that they see is best for them, them and their family. And so I think we need to meet all students where they're at, whether they're going to higher education, whether it's vocational, um whatever it is, whatever it looks like. I think it behooves us that we reinstall um these foundational skills and we do it high school wide, like every single high school should have this. As well as vocational programs, most definitely.
Hello, Ms. Meminger? Want to jump in?
Uh, yes, I see why you said everyone smiles. Vocational programs are always exciting when you think about the possibilities. Um, I personally am a big fan of bringing the vocational track back period on a statewide level. That's something I would actually support and push for and and just because I think it's important to have that as an avenue. Because if you look at society, for one, um you will always need to build things, you always need to fix things. That's that's never going to go away. And so having a specialized track for those who may be interested in that. Because that just may be what they are interested in doing. That might be where their skill sets at, where they have been blessed and talented. Individuals who we're forcing to go one way when they have talent and they can take a totally different direction. And so I think when you look at knowledge, skills and abilities, that applies in both vocation and academics. And I think we can stress uh the vocational side just as much. But I would also caution to say that when we build out a vocational program. One, make sure that we're actually preparing them to enter the actual workforce, meaning actual certifications, actual things that they can take. And gain employment after the fact, so that we're not just simply taking classes to take classes. But that when they complete and when they finish and they move on from high school, they're able to enter the workforce. And be productive and contributing members of our community, which is important. Because that's what schools are. We're building citizens. We're we're supposed to be getting them ready to come out and be contributors to help. You know, take over roles and fill in jobs that, you know, we're aging out and it's their society. They're going to be taking over. So I think that's important when we look at vocations, that we prepare them for actual life. And then essentially, yes, and then a life skills kind of. Courses to help build out those like Agar was saying about building out those basic life skills. Because again, back to the same point of we are sending these young men and women into the community and we want them to be life ready. That's our job. Like, we're educating them. We're supposedly making them life ready along with academics. And also making sure that, you know, they're stable people. They're ready to go. I want I want to depend on them. I tell my uh a lot of my kids all the time that I coach, I listen, man, this is going to be your world one day. I'm just going to be some old guy. That it's going to be your world and I want to be safe in that world. I want to make sure you guys are well educated and well prepared so that I can uh retire in peace. So that's uh my vocational thought process. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Garrick.
Well, this certainly does bring a smile to my face. Um, I want to tell you that when I began this journey to serve on school board. I jumped in with both feet and started doing my homework. So I took the time, this is a a brochure, I went to a workshop with um the superintendent, uh Sarita Beeman. As well as the um assistant superintendent who's in charge of our our vocational training, Dr. Sean uh, Dr. his. Dr. Sean Gard Carroll, he's got a hyphenated name. And I am proud to say that we have dozens of vocational programs. We have magnet programs as well as certifications and they're growing every day. Where I think that we we build on our successes is that we partner with our uh with our professional as well as our community leaders. I have been going to um the cities, challenging them to uh put their money where their mouths are, you know. Um, Seminole County Public Schools, as I mentioned earlier, is the key economic driver to our region. And we need partners to help us succeed. These cities are succeeding largely in part because of the success of our schools. And so um I like, city of Lake Mary, I was inspired, they have an internship where students during the summer can work. For the city and get real world experience. I'd like to challenge and I am challenging the other cities to to step up and do the same. I think that we need to have practical internships to make sure that when we when a when a student gets um a certification in nursing or something of the kind. That they actually have an opportunity to get a summer job in nursing. I was really pleased to hear that now um students can earn white futures hours for real world work as opposed to just volunteerism. So I think we need to keep on doing what we're doing and but we need to acknowledge that we have a really good e-pathways. That's what the the vocational track of Seminole County is called. We have a really strong e-pathways department. And um my personal children were uh all on a a college path. But I've got nieces and nephews that have gone different paths. We have avenues um for success for each and every one of our students. And we need to make sure that they understand and that parents understand that we have loads of different avenues for them to be productive citizens as we move on.
I have a a quick question and maybe uh Debbie Downer here to take those miles away for a second. Um, schools, I remember a time where they used to be like the safest place for a parent to leave their kids at. Unfortunately, within the past few years, with so many school shootings happening, um and especially with the Lake Yola scare last week. Um, I've heard a lot of parents discussing they having to talk to their kids again about being safe, about school shootings, about like gun control or lack of. Uh, I want to know what's your stand uh on like school safety and what measures as school board members, you each of you will want to take. Uh, to make schools that safe place again, where parents could literally leave their kids and feel safe the the rest of the day while they keep going with their jobs. Uh, if we can start with Mr. Meminger, I know as a former law enforcement uh officer and having school safety as a strong uh. Uh area in your in your campaign.
Well, there's my topic. Um, so one of the things about school safety that I'll tell people quickly and. And and also I'll throw out just to clarify, I actually still work, actually still in law enforcement, so I didn't retire yet, not yet, only elected. Um, so I still work and when we talk school safety, a lot of times I want to ensure parents that one. Seminole County Public Schools is ahead of the curve and has been for a very long time. So one of the partnerships that we have is with the Seminole County Sheriff's Office. The Seminole County Sheriff's Office runs the School Safety Division on behalf of Seminole County Public Schools. And that's a great partnership with Sheriff Dennis Lima and the school board and making sure that one, there's kind of a. A one stop for all decisions for School Safety Division. But the School Safety Division is comprised of every municipal city agency within Seminole County. So all seven cities contribute SROs or School Resource Officers into the program along with the School Resource Deputies. So there is a great partnership there and and one of the things that most people don't know is that one of the great, great things about this county is it's very, very, very. Partnership driven amongst us as agencies of law enforcement. We're very much a tight knit group. We work well together. And one of the things that the law enforcement leadership in this county came to a decision on very early. Was wanting to make sure that we placed a School Resource Officer and a School Resource Deputy on every single campus before it became a legal requirement. So after the school shooting, the unfortunate one down in Parkland, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act was. Put into effect and that did require that every single school, public school campus has to have a School Resource Officer, School Resource Deputy. Or you can use the Guardian Program, which is mentioned earlier, or some sort of armed security. But the foundational principle being that you have someone on campus to address any kind of active killer, active shooter threat. That's that's the foundation of that, because that's what you want. Um, and thankfully, we as a county had already started moving that direction well before that became. The law. So having the fore the forethought to go, okay, we need to start moving in this direction. We need to make sure we're securing our campuses and start changing the way we do business. So a lot of our threat assessment models are cutting edge. A lot of the ways that we do. Integrating mental health into threat assessment is cutting edge. Um, there's a lot of things that we actually do behind the scenes. So working with investigative units and I won't say their names, but working with these groups that help us kind of make sure that we stay ahead of these things. And we're trending and looking for early warning signs for issues that can come up in the future to help be threat mitigators instead of waiting. For it to happen and respond. So you really have to be proactive about that. And so we've actually done a very, very, very good job in that aspect. So I would tell a lot of parents, which that question would come up all the time as an SRO. Um, you know, about safety, how they feel about how we do things on the campus. And we definitely have always been ahead of the curve as a county, even just in how we require check in procedures. You know, the certain programs that we use for that to make sure that we're scanning and checking every single person that comes on campus for criminal history, issues along those lines. And then keeping those lines of communication open between the schools and the law enforcement agencies to ensure that. We are all working together and and everyone's command structure is on the same sheet of music and we've built out a very robust. Process about how we make sure we check and make sure we're double checking every single part of that. And so like all of my children still go to Seminole County Public Schools and at homeschool, then at private school. They still go to Seminole County Public Schools and I feel safe with them there because. I I send my kids every day and I go, listen, dad dad will come if needed, but you're in good hands, all right? You have a good SRO here. And that's for me personally as a parent, that's something I can tell other parents as I do. And obviously, there are things, like I said, that I would like to. Help address from that position because I think it's a voice that's needed because it's one of the few specialties where you can't learn unless you do it. That's just one of those things. And I've spent uh my entire adult life in public safety and school safety. So from that position on the board, being able to help be a liaison for the School Safety Division and for the community. Because I have the perspective and the experience to actually pull that off. So. It's a it's a dense topic. I'll stop talking because I can keep going for about an hour.
Thank you very much. Dr. Quinones?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, well. I would say hardening our schools, yes, is is probably one of the first uh areas I would look at. Uh, but I would go beyond that. I know Seminole County Public Schools is currently um testing out an AI program that will detect. Um, gun, so if there's a gun that happens to walk by one of the cameras. Um, and I know that's currently in place, but I think it'd be awesome to look into how we can expand on something like that. Um, the Guardian Program I mentioned before. Yes, we do currently have SROs, but it'd be fantastic to have a designated um. Program just for each campus, each school. Um, that's going to support not only administration, but also it's going to support the school district as a whole. So I I do believe in um looking into the Guardian Program. Uh, there's an awesome article, Indiana is considered one of the safest schools in America. Um, and if you have time to to look into this article, it talks about some of the the innovative methods or or protocols they put in place for safety, for school safety. Uh, some like key fobs is one of them, um doors that automatically lock behind you. You do not need a key. Uh, just things like that, little that may seem little but may have a very large impact as well as upgraded security cameras. You know, it's been mentioned before um by several candidates that if we're not safe, of course, we can't learn. We can't learn when we don't have that basic need of safety met. And so I think, of course, this is a an area of opportunity that Seminole County Public Schools, yes, we're doing a great job. But again, we can always be doing better. We always need to be ahead of this versus being, you know, it's about being proactive versus reactive. So those are just some areas uh that I would look into.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Fernandez?
So having um eight children and you know, my my son is going into um Lake Mary High School. And I have three year old triplets who are going to be entering the system soon. Um, I can tell you, safety for me is huge. I want to know my children are going to be safe in the schools. Um, I have been in so many different school settings. Um, and and I've seen what what's good and what isn't. And you have to ask yourself now, are we looking at an external threat or are we looking at internal threat? Um, personally, I am a very big proponent of the Guardian Program and I don't understand why it hasn't been adopted here. But I also believe that again, it's up to the parents to really decide for their children what uh they would like to do. So that said, I think that every school with the parents, you know, deciding, should we institute this here? Um, should be left open. Um, because I think what works for one school may not necessarily work for another and that's fine. I worked in a school with armed guards and I was comfortable with it and my students were all comfortable with it. And that might work better in a high school setting than elementary. Elementary, I know um. I've had schools where, you know, there was a a double checkpoint and the people that came in went into a vestibule. They had IDs, everything had to be checked in before you were actually let into the school. So there are lots of methods we can do, but again, it costs money. I actually posted about this of, gosh, well over a month ago about this uh AI program that's being used. And actually being used in some schools here in Florida, in the surrounding districts, um where they can. Uh, in the perimeter of the school, detect someone who is actually holding up a firearm. And alert the school to go into a lockdown. So there there are lots of things we can do. Um, again, this involves looking at the budget, looking at what, because the Guardian Program, you can have volunteers. This will cost nothing. Uh, and there are plenty of people willing to do it. In terms of internal now, you're looking at again, addressing now a a mental health issue with some of the students. And as Joshua had pointed out and mentioned, this is a team effort. We have to, have to have good communication between the schools, between the administrators, the teachers, the parents, the police. We need to all work together for the good of our children and um. There has to be a better way of, of getting help for, for some students who, who need it because. Personally, I have been able to identify students i- i- that I taught that needed help. Needed help and were crying out for help and it was a very difficult thing to do and I think more needs to be done in that area. Um. Besides just working with the parents, but being able to, to, to get them some, some proper resources and help. And if necessary, remove, remove them from the school. So we have to look at, at, a- again, as Joshua said, this is a huge topic. And there are lots of things we can look at, but personally, I would like to see more invested in mental health. Proper mental health resources, um, and I would also like to see the Guardian Program as two steps we can, we can take initially.
Thank you, Mrs. Garrett.
Thank you, um. This is a, this is a heavy topic indeed, um, much has been covered, thank you, um, Joshua for bringing your expertise. Uh, to the, to this discussion, I want to start with a personal story. My youngest daughter um, was in school and I had come home from work and I got a text. And it said, mommy. Now, my daughter at the time was seventeen, a high school senior. And you know, if you get a text from your seventeen-year-old that starts with mommy, something's going on. She said, mommy, I'm in a closet. And my teacher doesn't know if this is a drill or this is real. But I just want you to know that if there's someone here and I don't make it home, I love you. We need to know that whether our students are victims directly of gun violence. Or whether they are just going through the, the, the. The ongoing drills that we have. This is having a real impact on our students. So we need to understand, uh, we need to build on our comprehensive. Measures of safety, most of the threats in our schools, and Joshua, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. Most of the, the threats that we see come from students who have either been in that school or in, are, are in the school now. Most of the guns that come to our campus are guns that come from a student's house. Um, our Seminole County Sheriff's Office partnered with each of the law enforcement agencies throughout our county. Have been doing a phenomenal job, they monitor social media. They partner with, um, they partner with uh, community organizations. It, and I learned this from, you're going to get, I'm not trying to drop names, but I just want to know that I've been doing my homework. Um, I met with Captain Fortenberry, who is the Seminole County Sheriff's Office uh, Coordinator for Law Enforcement. Um, he was telling me about all the different measures that uh, that our coordinated groups take to monitor situations. So if there is a domestic violence um, incident in a student's house. The local, uh, let's say it happened in Oviedo. Oviedo Police Department would notify. Community um, organizations as well as the school to let them know that this student, the student might not have been involved, let's say it's parents. The student had an incident at their home over the weekend. Let's reach out and make sure that we're supporting this student who may have anger issues. Or is not getting the, the proper support at home. And so I think we need to continue to build on those partnerships. Seminole County has been a model for the state as far as our, our, um, our hardening efforts. I think we continue to learn and grow, I did want to mention the AI, um, the AI technology was mentioned early on. That was something, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Joshua, but it was actually found to uh, miss. Identify an umbrella as a weapon. So we need to be really sure when we bring in these new, new technologies, that they are tried and true. Because can you imagine if a student came to school with an umbrella in his backpack? And all of a sudden, he was surrounded by, you know, SWAT or, you know, heaven forbid, something else. So we, we really, we need to weigh um, the pros and cons and we need to look to the professionals and we need to see. Look to Indiana, look to the schools and the, and the areas in which uh, we're succeeding. And build on those efforts, um, I'm not sure that I can offer anything else that's, that's new that everyone else hasn't talked, talked about, but thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I would, um, uh, we are rapidly running out of time and I, I appreciate the thoroughness of all these answers. But if I could maybe do one last sort of speed question, where we just do like a thirty-second response, um. Uh, there's pretty conclusive body of research that says high school students learn best when school starts later around eight or actually. Eight thirty at Florida is really out of the mainstream. With uh, high school classes starting around seven fifteen or seven thirty in Seminole County, that means buses start picking children up. At, at as early as five thirty AM, which often means four forty-five get-up times in, in Seminole County. I'm wondering if school start times for high schools are something you all are concerned about and if so, uh, if you have any thoughts on that. And Dr. Quinones, we can start with you.
Well, this question is near and dear to my heart as well, my son has to be at the bus stop at five fifty-five. Every morning, Monday through Friday, and let me tell you, it's a doozy. Because if you think about the time you have to wake up in order to be standing at that bus stop. It doesn't allow for a whole lot of time in the morning and so it's actually something that I've been wrestling with. Um, but I would say, looking at putting back the start time for our high school students. What impact would that have, would that have an impact on budget? Do you think, well, why, why would that have an impact on budget? Well, it would push everything back um, for those high school students. So I, I would say that I would like to look into what happens, you know, what are some scenarios that could happen? If we push the start time back to eight AM uh, versus the, you know. Super early times, especially for our bus drivers being out on the road, standing at those bus stops, um, and I could go on and on, but. Yes, I, I would to see where, what it impacts.
Alright, thanks for keeping it tight, uh, Ms. Garrett.
Well, I think this is particularly one of those issues that it would be great to have a town hall and make sure that we hear from. Citizens and students as well as from the folks making decisions. Um, as uh, Agar mentioned, uh, you know, it might impact students who work after school and um. As well as sports and those kinds of things. I would like to consider flip-flopping elementary and high school, uh, high school start times. Many of our elementary school kids are up at, you know, five in the morning, raring to go. So when you look at the, the natural sleep patterns of different ages of students, that might be a solution.
Okay, thank you, uh, uh, Ms. Fernandez.
Uh, so, uh, thirteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old, twenty-year-old and twenty-two-year-old, I've gone through this already and I can. From my experience, it just seems that the later a student starts, the later they stay up at night. Because a- and you, I'm happy to look at the science because this is a, actually a relatively new topic that's come to my attention. That's come to the forefront now, I'm happy to look at the science again. But um, there's also science that says, you know, kids should be in bed at a certain hour as well to get. A, a, a restful night's sleep, so. I agree with uh, Ms. Garrett that you should probably have a town hall, probably have as much input from parents and students as possible. And we can examine this because it does have an impact on so many things. Um, including the busing, including people uh, ha- uh, their work schedules. So it's something that we can, we can visit and happy to have a discussion about it.
Thank you, and Mr. Meminger.
Hey, well, I feel everyone struggled as well, my high school senior has to pop up bright and early and get his little happy self out the door. And uh, dad is cracking the whip right behind him, so I feel his pain, I'm, I'm struggling too. Um, but I would also say, yes, that type of decision is definitely a stakeholders meeting. You definitely want to get with everyone and make sure that that can be done, if we can flip-flop times between either the middle schools who typically have the later times. And maybe the high schools, that might be one avenue to address that. And then secondly, budgetary constraints, if that doesn't allow for that, meaning we're not allowed to. Alter the transportation route too much more, if it would cost us more in the long run, we. Would have to look at it and then last one, at least I'll throw in just kind of a safety caveat, one thing that's been brought up for me personally is just. That when time changes, especially happened earlier, our students are out, they're typically at bus stops that are pretty dark. So a lot of neighborhoods do not have the same well-lit bus stops, a lot of them have very dark ones, they're on dark streets, dark corners. And our kids are standing out there, essentially in the dark with no one out there with them waiting for a bus. So a later start time would obviously give you some more daylight, so there's an added bonus there if we were to go that route on. Why a later start time would definitely be better.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, um, I wanted to thank everybody, we, we are actually going to go a little over, but I think. It was well worth it to hear from everybody and about your plans and, and, and opinions on. This big job that we have of educating Seminole County students. And so I wanted to go and ask, um. Ask everybody to just give us a one, one and a half minute. Kind of closing pitch as to why you believe you'd be the best person for the seat, which is an open seat, so there is no one combat. Um, and we started off going alphabetically, so let's start off alphabetically in the other direction with uh, Dr. Quinones.
Thank you so much, uh, well, you know, Seminole County Public Schools has been based and, and has built a foundation on. Providing all students a high-quality education. And so I am running to not only continue that high-quality education, but move us forward in a positive direction. To unite us as a school board, to unite us as a community, not only our teachers, uh, our parents, but also our students. To continue to be a beacon, but again, I mentioned, good is the enemy of great. And so we may be a good school district, but I know that we can be great. And so being a school board member would allow me the opportunity to, to work side by side with our parents, with our teachers, with our students. Um, I have over fifteen years' experience working in the field of education, public, private, nonprofit. And that gives me the ability to be able to look at things from different perspectives, just, uh, not just solely from the public school um, perspective. I have two small children, one of them is um, a student with a five oh four and so. Having that experience as a, a teacher who's worked with exceptional student education. Um, for many years from elementary students all the way up to adults. I, I bring that, um, some of that expertise and how we can better uh, prepare our teachers to be able to work with our students. And also empower our parents so that we can be again, a partnership working alongside our ESE students. On top of that, I, I have the two certifications, um, I do also have experience working with formal education, um. Uh, formal assessment writing, um, just to name a couple different areas. But being a school board member means that you get my expertise, my qualifications. And also you get my heart and my heart has always been, how can I be a servant leader to every student and every family? So, thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Meminger.
Alright, well, uh, I'll first off start by saying, hope this doesn't count against my minute, but thank you all for inviting us all out for this interview. It's been an absolute blast, um, a good meeting you all in person and look forward to future endeavors. So I'll start with saying that, thank you for your time and thank you for inviting me. And I will start with the Seminole County Public Schools is a phenomenal district, we're an A-rated district, we're one of the best districts in the state. And, and the nation and it consistently has been so. And one of the things, seeing an open seat, um, is going, well, there's time for leadership, it's specifically coming from District Five. And although I know District Five is mostly Sanford and that you represent on a county level, I thought it was very important. That you have representation from District Five, that's a longtime resident, a longtime employed person here, I work in Sanford, I live in Sanford, I play in Sanford. This is my home and yes, you represent on a county level, but that representation coming from this community. Authentically and really coming from this community is important to me. Um, I'm a current parent, like I said, I have three of my children still in Seminole County Public Schools, so I have skin in the game. I'm invested in this as a father, first and foremost, because I would look at the state of schools and go, well, hey, I want to make sure that. I'm doing all that I can do, I'm in public safety, yes, I work in our community, I'm serving currently. But in this sense, changing roles and going from serving one into the other, um, as a leader in an organization, as a leader in Seminole County Public Schools. As an instructor and a teacher myself, I actually teach a couple of different programs. I've taught our actual staff and administrators on school safety, because that's what I've done as far as my expertise. Uh, making sure that community volunteering and mentorship is a big thing, but in this community as well. And that's gives you the kind of credibility and the integrity to be able to go out into this community and actually serve and be. Respected in that sense of knowing that you're from here, you are here, we know you're part of this community and you're a leader in this community. Um, bringing the fatherhood perspective to our school board, I think it's just a missing perspective as a father. You want to see yourself represented on that board and representing the other fathers and male staff members and our sons that all attend Seminole County Public Schools. Having that perspective and life experience that you have from being a dad, from being a male just in general. I think it's helpful because we make decisions for an entire school district, you want to make sure that representation is there as well, so. I always say fatherhood perspective is very important when we talk about leading organizations and leading people. Aside from that, thank you for your time and I look forward to seeing you all in the future.
Alright, Ms. Garrett.
Hi, well, um, thank you again, all of you for, for having us and it's been a pleasure learning more about the other candidates. Uh, so, um, what sets me apart, let's see. I, uh, I as well have extensive um, education experience. Um, I founded the Story Theater Company, Tales to Tell, and while I often talk about my direct experience in Seminole County. Having worked at thirty of our thirty-seven Seminole County Elementary Schools, I've actually worked throughout central Florida, including public schools. Have done extensive uh, programs, exciting kids to read in Orange County, have worked at over a hundred and forty different schools. So I understand the climate and culture of schools throughout our region. When I first began this journey to uh, to um, become a school board member. I wanted to find out exactly what does a school board member do? So most of the information that I had found online was very vague and what I learned was that. A school board member is really the bridge between the community and the superintendent. We craft the policy based on input that we get from the community. In addition to my work in schools, I've also been a community advocate and leader. I have deep ties to specifically the, the Midway, Canaan City Historic Migrant Community in Sanford. Um, about a year or so ago, uh, after, after doing work for them for, for several years, I joined the board. And I advocated for eighteen million dollars in grants to help um, restore the infrastructure. As well as to build parks, so as. A bridge from the community to the schools, I know how to get things done, I know how to lobby. I think we need to lobby uh, Tallahassee to make sure that we have more independent control over our local schools. I think we're going to need to come together with other school districts and we're going to need to lobby for more money. And when you want somebody to get the job done, I'm your girl.
Mrs. Fernandez, you get the last word.
Alright, I will try to make this short and sweet, um, so. I chose Seminole County as my home. After doing extensive research and I agree that it is a wonderful, wonderful county. With great districts and a great school system and I want to be part of that. Because my family and I left our home for many years. To be part of a community that has the same vision that we do for our children. I want to be the board member that is going to keep her promise, who has her principles intact. And when I tell you I will listen to the parents, I am going to listen to the parents. Because so many of those promises just fell below the wayside and I, I, I don't want to see that anymore. Autumn's right, it is a bridge, but it is one where we have to listen to the community and the needs of the parents. Which I will always do, day or night. And it has to be a bridge with the school system, not just the superintendent, but our teachers in the classroom. And I did that in a special education classroom, in an inclusion classroom, in a general education classroom for many years. I know the needs, I know the difficulties, the challenges, the issues. To be sympathetic and to also understand what needs to be done. And how to communicate that effectively from one party to another. Um, I also have a corporate background, a nonprofit background and then have decided. That my, I was going to follow my heart and my passion and work with children as I already have eight of them. And believe me, multiculturalism and understanding diverse needs. I have, uh, I'm in a multi, interracial marriage, I have interracial children. I have a child who suffers with anxiety, I have a child who is gay, I am, I am as multicultural as you can get. And I promise you one thing, besides listening to the parents. And I promise you one thing, besides listening to the parents, I promise I will do my homework and my research and will not make any decision based off politics or based on anyone else's needs or pressures. Parents first. Thank you very much for your time and really appreciate it.
Well, I want to thank all the candidates very much for your participation.